The Pledge of Allegiance to our regular meeting in case any of you are wondering why that's not on our special meeting agenda. But, public comment right now for any comment that does not pertain to our Cannabis Workshop. So if there's anything else you wanted to bring up very quickly? Nope? Okay, we'll move right ahead into our one item. Cannabis Workshop Discussion. You might notice if you've looked at the agenda, we have a couple attachments that will be part of our conversation. I'm going to invite our town manager to introduce the topic with a brief report. I'll then invite public to comment. Obviously, some of you are here with a message.
The council has been on a multi-year discussion of how to implement the results of 1996 voter enacted Proposition 215. And as a part of that discussion, the council's established an ad hoc cannabis advisory committee, and also has enacted a current regulatory framework consistent within that approach. Currently, the council, the town policies with regard to regulation are, one, we prohibit outdoor cultivation. No outdoor cultivation, commercial processing plants, warehousing services like that are permitted. We also prohibit outdoor grow. The law allows for the personal grow of up to six plants indoor and at the discretion outdoor. The town prohibits outdoor grow. We do allow delivery of marijuana from a licensed facility with a permit, and we do not presently allow either a recreational or a medicinal dispensary. So I just kind of wanted to put a little bit of a framework there. The other thing that the council has taken a course of action to say is, at some point in time, we need to look at, how is this working? You know, what is the evolution? Where are things at? And so today's report really is a check-in from the council to have a conversation about the current regulatory framework. Are there things that you would like to revisit, look at, gain additional information? There is no action proposed. And I'm going to say that one more time.
Wait, hold on just a second. Make sure Bruce and Billy are listening to what you're about to say, because I think you want to hear this.
There is no action. No action proposed from staff. There's no direction from the council to change the current policy. But our ad hoc committee has requested that we have a conversation to see if this is something periodically that we need to be looking at. So in this current structure, when the council has some feedback on, are there some areas they might look at? Based on some feedback from the ad hoc committee, again, not a recommendation, town staff has put together, myself, the attorney, and our planning staff, a series of questions. And they're topics regarding the regulatory framework. Not going to go into great detail. I'm going to give an overview of what those topics are, but it's really, it's a discussion point. Should the council want to make a change regarding any of these? Then we talk more about that, and what might that look like? So that process would mean that there will be several more meetings, I would assume, based on the history of this council, in terms of looking at what the change would be introducing. So again, I just want to really stress, this is an opportunity for the council, in an informal session with community input, to say, now that we've had a couple years of experience, is this, are there information? Are there things we want to consider and potentially look at?
Steve, if I, I just wanted to stop you before you get into the content there. Two things. One, I want to give Gary, our town attorney, a heads up that I'd like you, at some point, either right after Steve's presentation, or as it comes up about delivery and the, just to readdress our current status with allowing delivery by permit, the lawsuit that is pending now at the state level about a potential state requirement to allow delivery, and the lawsuit that opposes that mandate. So I'm just giving you a heads up on that. Well, I think I can stop there and let Steve go ahead and get into the specifics, because I'm sure we'll kind of talk around and around about this a little bit.
So, in this framework that we're talking about, the state of California has also established a Bureau of Cannabis Control. And the Bureau of Cannabis Control is in the process of establishing a number of regulations, rules, processing, and structures. So that framework is still evolving, and in some cases, they're adapting to both the industry and local. To the mayor's point, there, the current law allows for a local government to make a decision on whether they want to permit delivery of marijuana or not. The cannabis bureau decided to basically say that they had jurisdiction of delivery, and that they were going to permit delivery regardless. So in our particular case, the council had already approved delivery, so it's not a question of not having delivery, it's just a question of local control and the right to determine, in our framework, what we would say, the right to regulate how we want delivery. We do have one licensed deliverer, Fumay Napa, is a licensed permitted delivery, and they are following through in concert with the conditions. But I also say that because some of the things that we're looking at, when we go through, the state is further evolving and resolving them. So the topics that we would be looking at, if the council wanted to further discuss dispensary, would be things like separation requirements, separation from things such as elementary schools, kindergartens, daycare facilities, youth centers, separation from residential zoning districts, separation from school, separation from the Yountville Community Center. There's a range of distances that might be permitted, and we would also be prepared to talk about some different concepts. And also, within that separation is, how do you define the measurement? So I'm not, I'm just giving you topics right now, because if you're not interested, the next conversation is a lot. But also defining how one measures. Yountville's a linear, a linear community, so there may be some different definitions in terms of distance and separation, because if the interest is in, and I'm also going to say zoning, if the interest is to allow for the potential zoning that could permit, and again, just because you have zoning that allows something, does not mean that something necessarily will open or come. And then, we can talk about the parks, that relationship, churches, zoning districts where permitted, how do you want to initially cap? You know, are they interested in a maximum number of dispensaries? How would you go about a process? There's a regulatory process discussion. We can talk about use, conditional use permit, or a regulatory framework. There's some different nuances to how those work, so those would be part of the discussion. Hours of operation, conditions, building fire code compliance, parking standards, variety of things that we would talk to you about that may be different if this type of dispensary use was something the council wanted to talk about. So again, tonight, we're talking this afternoon more about a beginning conversation on these things, if this was something the council wants to discuss in greater detail. And with that, I'll let Gary answer a little more detail the question that you phrased.
Yeah, so mayor and council, on the question of delivery, this is a changing area of the law right now. You'll recall Proposition 64, adopted by the voters statewide, expressly retained a local government's ability to regulate or completely prohibit cultivation, with the exception of six plants per household, as Steve already mentioned, delivery, and businesses' retail, such as dispensaries. That was a major selling point of Prop 64, and one of the reasons it had support at the time from local jurisdictions. The state of California, through the Bureau of Cannabis Control, has recently adopted a regulation that says that a properly licensed cannabis business for delivery, meaning it's properly licensed in the jurisdiction in which it is located, so the local government, wherever its primary business is, has said, yes, you can deliver. If that business also has a license from the state, they can deliver into any other jurisdiction in California, even if that jurisdiction has prohibited cannabis delivery in that area. Local governments, many local governments believe that this violates Proposition 64. As a statewide proposition, only the voters can change it unless they've included some provision that allows the state to modify it. Such a provision does not currently exist in Prop 64. So the argument right now is that the state exceeded its authority to modify Prop 64 by adopting this regulation. That's currently being litigated. As some of you know, the firm of Churchill White is litigating this case on behalf of, I think, about 25 different cities right now. That's going to work its way through the courts to decide whether or not that regulation violates Proposition 64 or not. The current state of the law is there's an enforceable state regulation that says, if you're properly licensed somewhere else, you can deliver into another local jurisdiction. And so many local jurisdictions, including the town, have created a system that essentially allows that to comply with the state regulation. The permit requirement, as long as it's pro forma, does not violate that regulation, because simply requiring someone to say, "I'm conducting a business in your town," is not an impediment to actually complying with that regulation. It's no different than requiring a business license or other basic information about people who are conducting business in town. So, we'll see how that plays out in the courts.
Okay, thanks.
The other thing that I would say, we had the benefit of our ad hoc committee recently attending a two-day workshop on some of the current trends, issues, and they may have some information on the topic that's trending that they may want to share at this time, too.
Well, I was going to invite them to each bring that up either before or after I ask for a public comment. Just as a reminder, because I know we have a couple folks here that don't normally come in, and first of all, welcome. One of the reasons that we do these kind of workshops is because we're not allowed to have this conversation unless we're in a noticed public meeting. So it might seem a little bit unnecessary, or very kind of rudimentary that we're talking like this, but we can't have this conversation unless we're in this format. So, we did commit, when we were talking a year ago, about what we were going to allow and prohibit. We committed to having further discussion, as town manager alluded to, Vice Mayor Dorman and Councilmember Durham have been on our ad hoc committee. And so if you'd like to provide any additional information now, I invite you to, if you want to wait for public comment.
I'd like to wait till, I'd like to wait till after public comment.
Do you have anything you wanted to invite or introduce now?
No, mine is sort of more anecdotal, so probably more when we get to discussing things.
Okay. So, you know, we're going to, I think, talk about all kinds of things. First of all, there's no guarantee that we're welcoming a dispensary. So I know that when you start talking about it, some people draw conclusions. As the town manager expressed, not only are we not taking any action today, there's no guarantee of a future action. We have committed to continuing to educate ourselves and all of you and our community about the pros and cons of potentially having a dispensary, or even a distribution center. We can talk about the differences between the two. Where one might be zoned. As the town manager again alluded to, we get conflicts in distances pretty quickly in a small community like Yountville. If we're keeping, if we say, yes, we are interested, where could it potentially go? But it needs to be X feet away from an elementary school? Well, you'll see in the maps that we provided, a very cursory circles of what would be conflicts. For 600 feet, which is the minimum standard from the state, jurisdictions are allowed to modify that, either less or more. So that would be an example of what we might want to talk about. If we want to consider a dispensary, where could it go as it relates to the community center, as it relates to our public parks, things like that? And if so, it also still needs the support of a property owner. If this is to be had, if we zone something, that's no guarantee that that means it's going to happen there. The property owner, for example, we all know how much the Vintage Estate is a significant part of Yountville. That's a big, big chunk of two parcels. If they say, no, we're not interested, that takes away a very large part of our commercial area. That means we don't have to, you know, talk any further about that area. If they say, we're open to it, then we have to figure out, is there an area on their property that might make sense? We have talked a little bit in the past about likely limiting any zoning to somewhere along Washington Street, but we've also recognized that there might be some pockets on the east side of Washington Street that might still make sense, not just the west side or the highway side of Washington. We want to talk a little bit more about what conflicts might that either raise or eliminate. You know, we know that there is a dispensary. As a matter of fact, we have the owner and representative from Harvest Dispensary from Napa here today. I see Howard has just identified where you are, and I'm sure he'll be talking to you later. But to get a perspective of whether that, that retail business is going to be looking to provide delivery services other parts of the valley, hopefully we'll get some anecdotal information about operating a dispensary and how it fits into that part of Napa. So, I think what we'll do now is invite any of you that would like to comment on this item to come forward. Normally, we limit this to three minutes. I know it says five minutes on here, but because we don't have a large crowd in here, I think we can, as long as you're all willing to respect other people's time, I don't need to have the clock running for this conversation. So, unless you really start to monologue, then we're happy to have you share your thoughts. And if there are any questions, we'll take the questions and then hold them until we have the proper person that can answer them all after you ask. So with that, I invite any of you that would like to come forward to please do so. Who's first? Billy, you want to be first?
I'm at first.
See, your hand was just a little bit too slow.
I'll be first. If I have the opportunity to come back.
Depends how much you talk now.
I'm just going to talk one minute. Personally, I would like to hear what they have to say before we talk. That will open up some questions, and probably some answers to, you know, questions that I have, and I think probably other members of the audience might have also.
Of course.
So, can I come back?
This is, we're going to try to keep this as, as two-way dialogue as we can, realizing that we need to have a little bit of format, not only for recording it, because we still have minutes for this meeting, but when we do go on the air, so there's the ability for audio and video to keep up with all the conversation. So, yeah, absolutely.
I appreciate the fact that we, that you're providing us plenty of time to talk, too. Thank you.
Absolutely, sure. And recognizing that, that we're going to learn as we go. Does anybody want to come up and provide information now? Anyone else? You had raised your hand earlier. Did you want to come up?
Oh, sure.
Yeah?
I have a question.
And if you'd be willing to identify yourself.
Oh, hi, Mary Carpenter. Hi. Yeah, I have a question. CBD versus THC, are you guys, is that all lumped together in everything that you guys just talked about as far as the dispensary and Prop 215, Prop 64? And then the second part of that question is, if it's not, would a CBD retail type of store with just like lotions and, I don't know, like wellness, like around wellness, as far as like massages, and just all of the things, like CBD oil and stuff like that? Like, in my mind, and I'm not a scientist that doesn't, that's separate from THC, but I don't know how you guys, as a town, would qualify that. I'm looking at it more from a wellness point of view. So, if someone wanted to do that, would that be allowed? Or is that grouped under the THC cannabis world? I just don't know where the defining point is in those two things. So I'm looking at it from like a wellness situation, not cannabis, if that makes sense? So that's it.
Sure. We will definitely get into that. The one other thing, and I see our town manager and town attorney plotting over here, we will definitely distinguish between the medical and the recreational, which kind of over, to overgeneral or oversimplify it, CBD versus THC. We can also address the hemp.
That's what, I was just going to say.
And the fact that there are some large retailers that are now offering hemp-based products, and some of them being the lotions and creams and things like you were just talking about. So we can work on definitions and distinctions, and if a, if a business wanted to, to open as a therapeutic wellness, how does that factor in if it's either hemp-based products or CBD products without the THC? And we will also get into some definitions of all the alphabet that we're getting into right here, because that does get a little bit confusing. There are different levels of the product. So we'll, we'll get that either from Steve, or maybe more from Gary.
Thank you.
Can I have you repeat your name one more time?
Mary Carpenter.
Mary Carpenter, thank you.
Thanks for the question. Anyone else who want to go now? Bruce?
I just want to make sure I understand it, because I like what Billy had to say. I have about a three-minute presentation that could be totally old news, depending upon what we learned, so I'd like to be open-minded and be able to have maybe three minutes after we learn the new news.
Sure.
Okay, good, thank you.
Anybody else want to go now, or do you want to wait until we start covering some topics? And I realize that, I wish I could just have you raise your hand and call out, but we need to make sure we can hear everything and get it recorded, so we'll still need to have you come up to the microphone. So, maybe we should start off with some definitions, Gary. The difference between CBD and how it basically is defined as the medical versus THC, and if you want to throw in the definition of hemp while you're at it.
Yeah, so broadly speaking, under California law and the Health and Safety Code and Controlled Substances Act, cannabis is defined broadly to mean anything derived from the cannabis sativa and two other breeds of that plant. CBD is one of over 100 different substances found in the plant. THC is another one. THC is the psychoactive ingredient in the plant, meaning that which has an effect on mood, and in layman's terms, gets you high. So CBD, it does not, though. It is not a psychoactive compound in the cannabis plant, and so it is some, used for different applications in the THC. CBD is also found in other plants, including hemp, and the federal government has recently cleared the way for CBD derived from hemp products to be treated differently. And derived from that plant is not regulated in the way that these are regulated here for purposes of Prop 64 and SB 94 and the other regulations that are going to affect at the state level. I don't know if that's muddied the water more or cleared it up, but CBD is in a lot of different plants. If it comes from the cannabis plant that's regulated in this way, then it is subject to these regulations and state law.
And to, if you could speak to what would be a less traditional, certainly not a dispensary, but more of a therapeutic or wellness type of business? I'm assuming it would be based on what type of products they would be using, and what would be allowed, or are there different definitions? Would it all fall into the same, the same type of zoning that we would be looking at or not? So maybe start with Gary, or, let's go Gary then, Steve.
Yeah, so, not necessarily, because if you're using, if you are regulating the CBD that's coming from the hemp plant that the federal government has cleared the way for, that is not going to be subject to the same restrictions here. If you are offering it as a derivation of the cannabis plant that is regulated under Prop 64 and SB 94, it is something you could carve out and require through regulation or an ordinance or a use permit, a business that only provides those types of products, the non-THC products, in a therapeutic setting for whatever that application is. And not necessarily as a medicinal product, in the way that we talk about medical marijuana or medicinal cannabis.
And would you classify hemp products and CBD-only products the same way in terms of regulation, or would they be different?
I think they'd be different.
You've got a really, this is getting into, the hemp is going to be basically allowed. The CBD is going to depend, again, on where it's derived from. If it's a cannaboid-based CBD, then it's going to be regulated. So the short answer to, I think, Ms. Carpenter's question is, if you're having a day spa or a product retail right now, you'd be able to sell hemp-based, and you would be subject to our normal retail zoning. That would not require, that wouldn't go anywhere near the requirements for a dispensary. Now, and that's why I'm saying, you know, something like Ranch Market could have lotions and care products that they're selling, or other places, or other of our spas. Right now, hemp-based, and, you know, there's a lot of derivatives of stuff that is in the wellness product. So that's not necessarily regulated under the cannabis structure, because that's permitted, and then that would be subject to our normal zoning for retail, or if it's a spa, then it would be under the spa, and it'd be ancillary services that they sell. So I don't know if that completely answers the question.
Well, I think it falls just short of identifying, if you talk about more of a retail environment, I think the question was more about if there is a wellness service, if there are wellness services like massages that use oils that might have CBD elements in them. Does it, again, require, if it's coming from cannabis, it would fall under a Prop 64-like regulation?
That's our understanding at this point, based on the regulations we've seen from the state.
So similar to a dispensary, but potentially different? Is that accurate?
Yes, and I would also say that, I go back to the, the point, because the first thing I would say is a day spa service, massage, the first thing they have to be is regulatory, you know, the right use for that permit. And then the product becomes secondary, and that's what I guess I'm trying to say, which is why a hemp-based product, or a regular, traditional, you know, a place that normally has spa products and services, that would be governed that way. Only if it's a cannaboid-based CBD would it fall into, as we understand it, the current cannabis regulatory framework. So, the short answer would be, an existing spa can't use a CBD-based lotion and oil at this point in time.
But, one point, CBD can be derived from hemp.
And again, that's correct.
So, it's just to, just to clarify that point, that based on whether the CBD comes from cannabis, or whether it comes from hemp as well, and depending on the point zero factor or whatever. So, I just wanted to clarify.
And that's correct, and which creates a lot of the confusion for a lot of people.
Yeah, Gary?
Yeah, and the reason for that is, if it's coming from the same plant that creates THC, that's still unlawful under federal law, and that's why it's falling under the state in Prop 64 and the state's regulatory framework for controlling everything from production through to the consumer, because all the products that are coming from that plant are a state-regulated industry.
Yeah, and maybe we put off the state versus federal for later in the afternoon, if we, if we end up getting there. Okay. Who else would like to offer a thought? Yes, Kelly, come on, come on forward and help educate us.
Hi, everybody. My name is Elliot Taylor. I'm a, a small partner in Harvest, Inc., which is a dispenser location that's in Napa right now, on Second Street. And it is a medicinal location only right now. It's not recreational, based on the local laws there. But I think I could maybe clarify a little bit on the CBD, just in a, in a little bit, in what I feel like is a very simple understanding. There's two plants. There's a sister and a brother plant that are related together, and that's, one is cannabis and one is hemp. And both of them have CBD in it. Hemp contains no cannabinoids in it that are psychoactive at all. Cannabis does contain cannabinoids that are psychoactive. Hemp is federally legal. You can go online right now and order CBD derived from hemp, and have it shipped nationwide right now, in all 50 states. You could probably go to Whole Foods right now in Napa and get products that have CBD in it from hemp. Yeah, for your hair, for, for all sorts of, all sorts of health items, and anxiety items, and inflammation reasons. So if you were to open a spa right now, you could leave So if you were to open a spa right now, you could legally serve or utilize lotions or products that have CBD in it that are only derived from hemp.
So Elliot, if you could just make sure you're
Oh, I'm sorry.
Going this way to stay on the microphone.
I'm sorry.
They'll, they have to listen to the back of your head.
Okay, okay. Yeah, so right now federally, it is legal to have CBD derived from hemp in all 50 states. So you can purchase that online right now. There's a lot of different companies that are supplying tincture format, lotion format, topicals, et cetera. There is different studies and different results based on CBD that comes from cannabis and CBD that comes from hemp. And so there is more benefit in recent studies that from CBD that does come from cannabis than from hemp, and it's something that's called full spectrum. I don't want to dive into that right now, it might get a little intricate, but I just wanted to clarify the two separations and see if that could be of any help to everybody here today.
It is, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Of Elliot?
Yeah.
Can you tell me the difference between a medical dispensary and a recreational dispensary on the state level, not on Napa's level?
You have to have a licensed physician, a licensed doctor issue you a medical license in order to purchase cannabis from a medicinal standpoint.
Very good. And that's that's to walk into your shop, then you need a medical card.
Yes, sir.
And that's the only difference.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, other questions or comments from the audience yet? Okay, so I will invite, maybe if we can have the Vice Mayor and then Councilmember Durham share some of their learnings, both from the recent seminar that you attended, but also just from your other research.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm going to start with the seminar, but I think the overall, one of my overall takeaways just from my general research in the seminar is, small towns like us are really not coming forward to talk about their experiences, so we're sort of going to have to pick and choose of those, what they've tried and put aside and tried again, which of those might work for us. One of the notes I've underlined is hemp is underway, so that was a good segue. The first speaker of the seminar was Senator Robert Hersberg, who, this is a question we get a lot, is about the banking and the cash and the security. He is quote convinced that Senate Bill 51 will pass and the governor will sign it, and therefore there will be a closed-loop banking system available soon. He also spoke quite a bit about what I think you are hearing up here today and why we're having this workshop, another quote, "There is extraordinary churn in the next five years before the business matures. We in government are flailing around trying to figure out what this looks like," and this is at the state level. So that kind of has a trickle-down effect, because as they change, then we find new avenues that we have to address. Where I want to focus most of my time today is that they, I attended one session called the Santa Rosa Experience, which was very interesting, because they are our neighbors, but because of how they've gone through it. They have had medical dispensaries since 2005, and so their question when all of this started to happen was, what, will we be impacted if we do nothing? That was the question that their staff and council put set out to answer, and I'm going to cut to the chase, but then I'm going to tell you how they got there. Quote, "They took an aggressively permissive stance on the cannabis policy." Now, that Santa Rosa, again, I echo the mayor when I say, nothing is happening here today, nobody knows what's going to happen, but this is just one city's experience in how they got there. What they ended up doing, they did a lot of public outreach, and they ended up, they wanted to simply make cannabis another business, to integrate it into other businesses. They see it just like, and the example they called out was a flower shop. They see it just like another retail outlet. They also, interestingly, they wanted no delivery, because they wanted everybody to have to go to the storefront. The quote from them is, "We do not have a cannabis program. It's all integrated. It is not a police issue, it is a code enforcement issue." When they got to taking applications, they first took them on a merit basis, and that became so uncomfortable that they have now gone to a first serve, first come, first serve application of policy, and they're about to put out another round of them. They looked at everything that we have here today, neighborhood compatibility, the separation, what the taxes should cover. They saw it as covering their code enforcement, not as building a budget around it. Again, I don't say this because this is what Yountville is going to do or what Yountville should do, that remains to be seen by you all and by us. It's just, it was interesting to have a neighbor so close that has gone through a real process on this, so we hope that you will bear with us and be part of our process as we go through this. Their bottom line, they saw it as a cultural process, the will of the community, and I think certainly that's why we're doing these workshops is, we see it the same. And it's it's just, it's very interesting, because I think that I went, I went one day and Councilmember Durham went one day, and I think we each probably hit about five sessions, and flux was the absolute word. And one other thing that really wasn't covered in the seminar, but I do want to bring up, is there is a bill right now in the legislature that will require a community that has businesses with on-sale alcohol licenses, which we have a few of those, to have a certain number of dispensaries. Now, I don't know where it is in the legislature, I don't know how it's going to come out of the legislature, but when we, as a town and as a council, look at these things, we have to try to plan, because the question is, where will we be if we do nothing? I think Santa Rosa asked a good question.
Thank you. Councilmember Durham?
Excuse me, one second. So it was interesting, I went on the second day, and I went to this cannabis forum in Sacramento, which was last Thursday, expecting to get best practices from everybody and just have some sort of basis for notes for the future. And what I realized was, nobody had best practices, because they were just rolling it out. It's very interesting that there are a large percentage of municipalities in California that do not have cannabis available. And what I learned at this forum as well, kicking it off, is one of the reasons that's happening is because a lot of them have chosen not to do anything until 18 months later, which is now. So Chula Vista was an example, they were up a lot, and they are currently taking applications now for dispensaries, but their big discussion the whole time was that it be a slow process, a learning process, and that it definitely involved community outreach, which we have done as well, which is very nice to know as a process. So some of the things I learned, excuse me, let me piggyback on the final thing that the Vice Mayor said. So this is Assemblymember Phil Ting, Democrat from San Francisco, who said this. He has introduced a bill that would require cities to license pot shops if more than 50% of the city's voters approved Prop 64. The cities would have to issue licenses equal to 25% of the alcohol sales licenses in that city. So you know why I'm smiling, because of that last sentence. Cities that object to the minimum number of licenses would have to submit an alternative to the city's voters. So let me just give you all a quick overview of Yountville's voter turnout this last election was a very nice 82.4%, very nice for all of you who went out. Of that, for Prop 64, 960 said yes, 976 said yes, and 562 said no, for a percentage of 63.45%. So the reason that I find that interesting, first of all, is that this is exactly, if I had read this at any other time, I would just put this to the side, but what the town manager spoke to at the beginning was what happened with delivery. Even if we had voted not to allow for delivery, we'd have to allow it now, because now the state has overridden our local jurisdiction to do it. So I think just the fact that that conversation is being had in the legislature is is a good reason for us to have a workshop, to discuss what our thoughts on are on this. We talked about this, I believe it was about a year ago, when we had the community forum, which was very well-attended, had a lot of great conversation and comments. But a year and a half later, what's amazing is, Councilmember, excuse me, Vice Mayor Dorman and I have still continued to meet, have still continued to talk, have still continued to share article after article about what's going on in the cannabis industry in California. And let me say as a side note, I own a business in Humboldt County, so I'm highly aware of what's going on for the last 18 months as well. It's a hotel, it's not another business. So, but we take cash gladly. So let me just, with that being said, that's that's one of the reasons I'm happy we're having this workshop and we're happy we're having this discussion. Just so you know that we're not in a vacuum here, we have been reading, we have been studying, we've been attending forums, we've been trying to stay on top of it, and what we found, excuse me, what I believe we found, I definitely found, was how it's changing, and as you said, it's going to be five years from now, and it's still going to be changing. So with that being said, I just want to bring up a couple of points that were brought up at my forum when I went there. It's not necessarily yes or no, it's just things that I thought were interesting. I'll go right to the cannabis food truck. They're talking about cannabis party buses now, so almost ultimately a food truck that would be able to travel around, that's cannabis-based, and be able to come into a community and be able to sell cannabis that way. So it's good we're having this discussion, this isn't something we thought of 10 months ago, you know? There was a lot of talk about equity, a lot of talk about equity. City of Oakland, city, excuse me, City of Oakland County of Los Angeles, a lot of talk about equity and what it meant moving forward as an opportunity for these cities and these counties to be equitable to the population that might have been taken advantage of over the last 40, 50 years because of our, excuse me, because of the federal or state's stand on marijuana. So a lot of talk about equity, but one of the things that I took away from that was the ability to create opportunities for local ownership as well as for local workforce. So I just thought that was an interesting way to look at things. Lot of talk about permits and how, planning permit and how to do that effectively, a lot of discussion on these zones that are all in our, that's in the town staff information as well. I mean, that's, I have a ton of other notes, which I'm happy to bring up as as you guys talk as well, and any questions that come up, but those are the main points that I stepped away from at that cannabis forum. Thank you.
Thank you. Gary, I'm going to try to give you a very short heads-up on taxation, state, county, and local taxes. So one of the thoughts that jurisdictions had early on was these big, big billion-dollar numbers that were thrown around in some of the states that got on board very early, and there was huge money, like in Colorado, billions of dollars, they were talking about being raised as an industry, and wouldn't everyone benefit if we did the same thing? Every state has its own set of taxes, and one of the things that we all continue to hear about is, when those taxes are too high, the individuals looking for a product are just going elsewhere. They're not getting into the legal market, they're going to go to whatever folks provide for less money. So, I mean, you can see that as consistent with any retail to a degree, but Gary, if you could just talk about the relationship between state, county, and local taxation, and if you know the current levels, that would be helpful also.
Sure. So there's a difference between recreational and medicinal. Recreational is subject to taxes, whereas medicinal is not, so I'm going to draw that distinction now. For recreational, there's a state excise tax of 15%, and that's on top of the sales tax that applies in that jurisdiction. There's a minimum of 7.75% sales tax, and then some local jurisdictions have tacked on additional percentage sales tax on top of that. The individual businesses are also paying fees for their permits that are sometimes in the tens of thousands to the state as well, but at a minimum, at the transaction level, there is about 23% to 25% tax already, without the locals adding anything on top of that. Of course, the town and other local jurisdictions, including the county, retain the authority to impose their own types of taxes on these, and you can increase sales tax and can go above that. There is some debate about how far to go, but yes, local jurisdictions can impose taxes on top of that.
Can I ask?
Yeah, go ahead, Councilmember Durham.
And current legislation to reduce that 15% tax?
Yes, I think that they, you know, I haven't reviewed it, I think they've either suspended it, or they're proposing to suspend it while businesses get off the ground, I think. There are, there is a debate currently happening at the state level about whether or not to continue the 15% excise tax.
Or at least reduce it, correct? 3% was the last discussion?
Yes. And I would add to that, the current level of discussion is that the regulatory framework on the taxation side, you had a lot of people aiming for the sky, aiming for the shooting for the moon, and there's a realization that that may be balancing out. A lot of local governments came in at a 2.5% to a 15% range, that's where, and some of them have an ability to adjust, but the current discussions are really saying, all of it's too high, because the cumulative impact, the 15%, the 7.75 basis in Napa County, 8.25, and throw on another local, anywhere from 2.5% to 10%, is just not, it's counterproductive. And so your point, Councilmember Durham, is you are correct, those whole things are being discussed. A number of early adopter cities that put in a tax in the range of 10% and 15% are coming back and reducing that. Some had a sliding range that the council approved a range and then, but you're seeing a lot of the local taxation drop back to 2.5% to 5%, with a few still hanging around in the 10%. But that's also, back to your word of the day, flux, the reality is, a lot of that is probably not going to be at the same level five years from now as it currently is.
Can I add something?
Yeah, I just, oh, go ahead, you add it.
No, after, I just want to add something to the tax. One of the other interesting presentations on Thursday when I went from, was from the Department of Taxes and Fees Control?
Administration.
Thank you.
Yep.
Which used to be State Board of Equalization. Also, they changed the name of the real estate, I'm a real estate agent, of the real estate department, and they've since changed it back, so don't get attached to anything. So one of the more interesting presentations, though, was to speak to their enforcement, because as I mentioned, in Humboldt, with my business in Humboldt County, still over 50% of the growers have not registered with the state, so they're missing out on a huge opportunity there. So the state approximately took in 400 billion, 400 million in cannabis taxes last year. So what's interesting, though, is that the potential for that revenue was not discussed about how high it is, it was discussed on all the illegal businesses that are still happening. So the Department of Tax Fees Association?
Administration.
Administration, thank you, has an enforcement of like eight people who are just going out now to storefronts, to get them to be licensed so that they can collect taxes. There was a lot of discussion in the room as well, from the people attending, of how the local and the state levels could get together, because a lot of the local officials in the room wanted to figure out how to get this as well, because they wanted to understand it. But I just want to comment on the fact that they showed a graph of the potential for those taxes to exceed well over 1.5 billion if just the illegal businesses were to file a permit, and the illegal grows. to exceed well over one point five billion if just the illegal businesses were to file a permit and the illegal grows. So, i- it's not just about how high the taxes are as well, but it's a combination of all those.
One other question I had, um, about where the taxes go. If, um, they stay with, inside the jurisdiction of the business, for example, if you have a dispensary in Yountville, taxes could be, um, received in Yountville. If the dispensary is in, say, Napa and delivered to Yountville, the taxes would stay in Napa.
That's correct. Yes, that's correct, the physical location would need to be in the taxing jurisdiction, um, for that percentage of the sales tax to come back. State excise tax is going to the state of the sales tax, a small percentage of that comes back to the town, I think it's one percent. So, yes, fiscal location would need to be in the town.
Yeah, so that's, that's another learning that, uh, local jurisdictions have had, which is if they say, "Well, we'll share the taxes but not have the business in towns," that's not the way it works. You get, like you said, one percent from the state after it filters down, uh, that doesn't necessarily cover the impacts that any business would have locally, um, regardless of what they're selling. I do wanna get to, uh, some definitions and then the buffer zones that we have on the maps. If you could potentially try to work through some of the fundamental definitions, youth-based facilities, uh, things like that, that could be exclusionary, um, you know, services or activities. When we look at, okay, let's hypothetically say we're interested in zoning, where could these go? And where are the potential, uh, conflicts?
Can, so, and can I ask one question?
Go ahead, Councilor Durham.
If I might make a suggestion, and of course you can tell me no, might we be able to have a little public comment before we get into some of the, um, the details of the, um, of the staff report? If you think that's appropriate?
Yeah, I would like to get some definitions out front, just in case people are wondering.
Okay, thank you.
Like, the community center is gonna be a, a very good example of, is it, uh, by definition going to create a conflict buffer zone or not? And youth-based activity is one of those things that is being considered. So, maybe we just touch on some of the definitions and then we'll, we'll see if people have some comments.
All right. And for those of you following at home or in the audience, a, a number of these definitions are included in the detailed staff report and packet. But we'll start with first, what is mandatory by state law is that a dispensary shall not be located within a six-hundred-foot radius of a school providing instruction in kindergarten or any grades one through twelve, a daycare center, or a youth center. A local jurisdiction may reduce or increase the amount of separation based on local conditions in effect to provide health, safety, and welfare of the public. Locally in Yountville, Yountville Elementary School is the K to six and is subject to this rule. Daycare Center is defined in the Health and Safety Code as a child care facility, includes infant centers, preschools, extended daycare facilities, school-aged childcare centers, and childcare centers licensed by the state. Wine Country Day is a daycare center that falls under this definition, it's located on the grounds of Yountville Elementary School. At this point in time, Yountville does not have any individually licensed daycare centers operating out of a home that would qualify for that.
So, Steve, let's make sure we keep this narrow to the reality of Yountville. We don't need to go through, we don't have a youth center. If, we certainly have an elementary school that would be in conflict. Uh, if we, and also, these are listed here in great detail in the staff report. I wanna make sure that we don't get lost in the, the minutia. In particular, I think the elementary school, we understand, would probably be the number one area that would be of greatest concern, uh, being a youth-based activity. We may or may not decide that churches have that same, uh, or a similar category. We have to decide, it does, how does the Yountville Community Center categorize, and so maybe you could touch on that one?
Well, what I was trying to use is give you the definitions upfront. Yountville Community Center is not, by strict definition, a youth center because it is a multifaceted facility, it does not operate classes and activities exclusive to the youth that we're talking about. So, it would be one of those areas where the town would have the ability to look at either no limitation or some type of restriction based on its choice. So, I'm just saying that would be, and then we'll be able to show you some, some different ranges. But again, that would be a determination that the town council would make if they wanted to treat it as a youth center. Potentially, they could, and then they would take action to do so.
So, I'd also wanna highlight Yountville Community Park. We have most of our, uh, children play equipment at the north end of that park. That may result in a different, um, consideration by the council than other parks that might be in neighborhoods that are less youth-oriented.
Let me go through the parks for you.
Just very quickly, 'cause I wanna make sure we don't get too far into it.
Playground equipment located at Yountville Community Park at the north end, Toyin Terrace Park, and Forrester Park. Under our current definition, Veterans Memorial Park does not have children's playground equipment, would not be subject to that. Vineyard Park does not have children's playground, it has the tennis courts and, um, but, or, excuse me, tenant court and the, um, sports court for?
Pickleball.
Pickleball and tennis. So, we've gone through all of those, and again, we're prepared to show you different definitions. And again, this is where the local jurisdiction would have the ability to make a determination on each of those parks and facilities as to whether it's youth-serving. And then also, we can get into a definition of how you are going to define your measuring because a large park, for example, may only have a youth portion in a small area, and you want to designate that area, not the whole park facility.
Yeah, I, I think we can maybe stop there on, on definitions. Let's see if we have comments or questions from the audience, come on up and, um, let's get those. And we'll come back to, uh, the definitions and how they relate to potential buffer zones.
Hi, everyone, Lorraine Wright here in Yountville. I saw a program not too long ago about, on Colorado and cannabis problem they're having there. And we talk about tax revenue, but are we considering the cost that are incurred in emergency rooms? It's gone way up, um, police, um, crime, um, plus the fact that it's been proven alcohol and cannabis don't mix. It's the two things you wanna put together, and this is wine country, it just seems very odd to me that this is even up for consideration. That's really my only comment, I'm, I'm concerned, um, I know there was a survey out and most people were, um, convinced that they did not want cannabis here in Yountville. And I, I feel that way too, I mean, this is a, a beautiful little town, um, we have a lot of nice wineries. My concern is you start bringing cannabis in here, two don't mix, um, more accidents, crime, um, hospitals. It's, um, it's a real concern. So, I'm glad that we're looking into it the way we are looking into it, but I want us to ta, also remember that the, the people living here were quite, um, big numbers against this. So, that's, that's all my comment, thank you.
I'll just quickly refer back to Councilmember Durham, I think you quoted sixty-three or so percent of voters supported cannabis in town. That's not necessarily that they're, um, open to a dispensary, but the, I think that had more to do with, back when we had the election, we were still also determining how we were gonna handle delivery. And would we prohibit it, and frankly, in my opinion, how do you, how do you, um, prohibit delivery when they're happening in unmarked vehicles, uh, coming in, uh, and it's almost impossible to, to control that. But, uh, there is, I think, the, one of the reasons that we wanted to continue the dialogue is there have been far over the, uh, half of our, um, residents supporting the use of cannabis. And mostly, I think it was medicinal, uh, but not entirely. And so, we're, uh, hearing all perspectives and looking at all sides because, uh, we had, through the, um, public workshops, we had, there were several members of the public that said, "I use it, I believe in it, um, and support that here." Totally understand the other perspective of, we have also heard from young parents that say, "We have children that, I don't want somebody growing plants on the other side of the fence, and is that gonna be more dangerous because my children are out playing in the yard and somebody's trying to steal the plants?" You know, we, we hear all of that, so, um, and we certainly understand there is still the concern of, is it creating, uh, more criminal activity? And if so, is it the use of it, is it the dispensary of it, or the dispensing of it? Uh, so that's why we're, that's why we're here, that's why we're talking through it all and getting a lot of perspectives, so, um, anyway. Who else? Bruce, do you wanna do your signs yet?
Well, I do, but thank you. Everything I have heard here has changed what I was gonna talk about, so thank you. Some of the signs are still there. To address what Carrie learned from Santa Rosa, one of the key words that I heard was that their town council and staffing were meeting the wills of the people there. So, I can only make an assumption from that, that their wills were different than our wills, okay? And I'll address Jeff's point in a minute, just for those that haven't seen it. Uh, this is one of the charts from the questionnaire that I thought was outstanding that the town put out. I recommend they do more of them, I think it's a great way to get inputs from people that won't come here, so I would support that. One of the questions was, should the town allow adult recreational facilities? And it was about statistically two to one against, so to me, that sort of says the will of the people. I know Jeff made a comment that this is not something that is documented by who did it, but either is voting, okay? Uh, the question comes up on medicinal, and that was indeed another question that came up. Any type, should the town allow any dispensary regardless of its medical or recreational? The numbers were about the same, okay? So, to me, the will of the people here is different in terms of dispensaries than maybe what Carrie found in Santa Rosa. Now, addressing what Jeff said about vote, totally agree, the, the vote was very different. The vote said people are in favor of legalizing marijuana, marijuana, cannabis. It didn't say anything about having dispensaries here. I think it would have gotten a very different approach, and the idea that we have some, somebody in Congress trying to tie those together, forcing us to have dispensaries here in town. I honestly, I feel sorry for the position that that puts you in because I feel that the will of the people is potentially different than what law we may end up with.
Wait till we have our next housing workshop, you'll, you'll be even more impressed with what's happening.
However, I do honestly feel that there is a solution to make both people happy, to make the legality side of what Jeff is saying work and the will of the people. You folks have the ability to set permit rates. Put a hundred thousand dollars on it, that may be a ridiculous number, but I would bet your lawyer can come up with backup on what costs have been in cities, an increase in cost in cities when dispensaries are put in. Whatever that number is, that becomes your permit price, that's gonna get rid of half the people. You also, I believe, have the right to set days and hours of operation. Tuesday, Thursday, Wednesday, twelve to five. Now, does that sound a little corny? But it solves some of the other problems people said about mixing cannabis with alcohol. Have it during the week and not on weekends, when you have a lot of tourists here, they're gonna wanna mix the two of them, okay? You meet the laws that we may be forced to meet, and you meet the will of the people. All right, it's good.
Thank you.
Your signs have gotten much more sophisticated over time, also.
And two-sided.
I noticed that, you were reading the back, yes. I've given you the back-of-the-head lecture before, I know. Yes, of course.
Billy Hewitt, Nine Landy Way. Thank you for providing this forum, and thank you to our ad hoc, uh, committee members who have enlightened us. And I would like to talk about Assembly Bill thirteen fifty-six that Mr. Phil Ting from San Francisco has presented to the assembly. We have the right to, um, ask for an amendment to this bill. And I think, I mean, I'm asking the town, the counselor, the council, the attorney, can we, as a body, write a letter and ask for an exemption? Since we've all, the council has already voted no dispensaries, the town is a very small, four thousand people at the most. So, could we write a, a letter asking for an exemption? That's one question. We, as individuals, can address our own Assemblywoman, who's Cecilia M. Egwalar Curry. If I have her phone number, if anybody wants to have that, we can write to her. And, uh, she's very, I know she's very open to wine country issues, the veterans home, uh, she's been very responsive. Seventy-six percent of the cities, according to Mr. Ting's, uh, information, seventy-six per, uh, percent of the cities have banned dispensaries in their municipalities so far. I mean, uh, in a lot of cases, I realize our hands are going to be tied, but I don't think we can just stand by and shrug our shoulders and say the state is going to say we have to do it. We can ask for exceptions, and we can kill the bill. And let's see. Hemp clothes, I've bought hemp clothes, you can buy hemp clothes all the time, gloves and hair products. And I appreciate the fact that you've already passed, uh, passed no dispensaries, and that came under, I looked up this and I thought it was really interesting, it came under Municipal Code of Peace, Peace and Welfare of the Community. Thank you.
Thank you. You also like to comment, yes?
So, I did a crash course.
Hold on, hold on till you get up here, there you go, thank you.
Hi, I'm Lori Hinnick. Anyway, I did a crash course on getting some stuff together to educate people on, um, about cannabis. And the, I apologize, it's not exactly in order, but it's, they're very important pieces to the puzzle that I wanted to share. So, I'm just gonna read. "It is important, though, to note that cannab, uh, can, cannabinoids, can't say it right, cannabinoids and other molecules present in cannabis can alter the metabolism of other drugs, especially due to com, um, competition for clearing metabolic pathways, thus leading to drug toxicities by medications that the person consuming cannabis may be taking." Is, and that what that's saying is it may interact with other drugs. "Exposure to marijuana may have biologically-based physical, mental, behavioral, and social health consequences and is associated with diseases of the liver, particularly with coexisting hepatitis C, lungs, heart, eyesight, and vas, vasculature, according to a 2013 literature review by Gordon and colleagues." Uh, let's see what else. Bear with me here. Okay. Uh, a two thousand, uh, the year two thousand, a study was done by researchers at Boston's Beth Israel Deaconess Medical Center. General Hospital and Harvard School of Public Health found that a middle-aged person's risk of heart attack rises nearly five-fold in the first hour after smoking marijuana, roughly the same risk seen within an hour of sexual activity. The Australian National Household Survey of two thousand and one showed that cannabis in Australia is rarely used without other drugs. Ninety-five percent of cannabis users also drank alcohol, twenty-six percent took, uh, amphetamines, nineteen percent took ecstasy, and only two-point-seven percent reported not having used any other drug with cannabis. Chemical compounds in the cannabis plant, including four hundred different cannabinoids, such as THC, allow its drug to have various psychological and physiological effects on the human body. Different plants of the genus cannabis can- Different plants of the genus cannabis contain different and often unpredictable concentrations of THC and other cannabinoids, and hundreds of other molecules that have a pharmacological effect, so that the final net effect cannot reliably be foreseen. Acute effects while under the influence can include euphoria and anxiety, although some assert that CBD, in varying amounts, may alleviate the adverse effects of THC. It is, little is known about CBD's effect on humans. The well-controlled studies with humans have a hard time showing that CBD can be distinguished from tobacco. Wait a second, I'm sorry. Blah, 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 blah. Distinguished from placebo, or that it has systematic effect on the adverse effects of cannabis. When ingested orally, THC can produce stronger psychotropic effects than when inhaled.
So Lori, if you could just wrap up your facts.
Okay, do you want me to like condense it? I'll condense it.
Yeah, because we want to make sure everybody has a chance to speak.
People can experience anxiety and panic attacks. Tobacco and cannabis smoke are quite similar, but cannabis smoke contains higher amounts of ammonia, hydrogen cyanide, and nitrogen oxides. Basically, it found that it's 20 times as much carcinic. So there's a lot of very negative effects.
One last big finish, right here, Lori.
Okay. So I'm going to skip some of this, and I can give you the information on where to find this. And I want to say why I'm sharing this with you, because I've been there, done that, and I experimented in high school, which resulted in some personal, permanent damage that has negatively impacted my health. I care about our community and want people to realize the dangers of smoking or ingesting marijuana. It is not safe, and anyone that believes this is deceived or lacks the proper information and knowledge. Just because things may be deemed legal does not make them good for us. This is a money-making industry, and that is the objective. I say health first. We need to protect our children and also adults. It would be a mistake to promote cannabis by having a dispensary.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Who else would like to comment? Anyone else? Okay, okay, let's, let's get to our maps and our buffer zones, because we're going to run out of time here in about 15 minutes or so. Because we get to stay here the rest of the night, by the way. You're all welcome to stay here as well. May lock the door. Anyway, so Steve, do you want to touch on these? Again, these are not official. These are for just a general understanding of what would be, what, what buffer zones might look like, and what, what conflict areas might look like. We haven't discussed 600 feet, 300 feet, 1,000 feet. So again, I wanted to be able to offer a visual. I think Steve will, we have two maps here that will help either clarify or totally confuse you.
And we have a lot more that can be customizable.
Nathan, you're going to do this.
If the conversation goes that way.
All right.
No, Steve's going to do it. I just click a mouse.
I think we'll, we'll start with the, the one that is a very clear under state law, which is the Yountville Elementary School, which, as you can see, is located in the center. So the dark yellow or orange would be the 300-foot radius. The slightly darker or lighter color would represent the 600-foot, which is the minimum state law requirement. So you can see the zones around it that would not be permitted. The lightest color yet shows you the broader range of the 1,000-range foot, and that would, that would take out a good portion of the center of town, just shy from the community center, through up to about Creek Street in that area. So you can see that it, the 600-foot range would allow for some areas, the 1,000-foot would be pretty, pretty significant hurdle.
So let me just interject very quickly. In the previous council conversations, we, I believe, agreed that residential neighborhoods would not be considered. So you see a large part of these maps. We already have said we're not even going to consider getting into the neighborhoods. One thing, and Gary, a quick add here is before Steve goes on, the difference between a parcel, the edge of a parcel versus a facility, and how something like this might be measured? If it's parcel-to-parcel edge, if it's facility-to-facility, does that make a difference in, in buffer zones?
Yeah, it does. So state law imposes a default.
Hold, just hold on, Bruce.
State law imposes a default that the town can modify for recreational cannabis. The default in state law is 600 feet from the closest two points of the parcel lines between the parcels. So whatever those, the closest points are between them, at least 600 feet, that's the default for recreational. That can be modified to a lower number of feet, and as a result, that essentially means the town can create its own standard for how to measure between them. Because if you can go lower, or you can go higher, then that means you can create the standard that you want for recreational cannabis businesses.
Okay.
I think to that point, Mayor, that the key, if we're going to do that, is it needs to be well-defined and structured, so that it's very clear to everybody in the potential enabling ordinance, how the measurement is made.
Right. So the reason I bring it up now is you're showing some buffer areas that get into the commercial area, and if it goes one foot onto 30-acre parcel, it eliminates all 30 acres by one definition and not by another. And so we have flexibility locally to deal with that circumstance. Yeah. There are also, could you touch on, and I'm not sure if I'm going to have the right term, but basically, boundaries like Highway 29 would be potentially a separator, if you would. If there's, and maybe 29 is the only thing that would qualify, something like Washington Street would not qualify.
Well, I think what you're referring to there is 29 has been used as a separator in the city of Napa. And in this particular case, the idea of a separator is you, you may have a creek, a river, a major thoroughfare that provides a buffer zone and a transition. And in Yountville's case, we don't really have any of those. I mean, while we have Highway 29 and it kind of separates, it's not separating two distinct districts of the town, per se. Because, I'm just saying, so it's not really a criteria that's going to be used in, in our case.
Right. Bruce, did you have a very specific question to this? I need you to come up to the microphone real quickly, though.
Yeah, I'm sorry, just looking at the map, I was a little confused. Is it 600 feet from the center of the property, or from each the farther extent? I can't tell, looking at the picture.
And I'm going to say, Bruce, where this is, pardon?
The maps right now are all very tentative maps, but the way they're drawn are from parcel lines.
But the, the first starts in the center of the parcel, is that what we're talking about? And goes out 600 feet in all directions? Or 300 feet?
So the 300 feet, let's show right here. This space right here to the edge of the darker is 300 feet.
Okay, so those are the exterior.
And it goes 300 feet from the parcel of Yountville Elementary School.
Yeah, so the exterior edges of that whole parcel, 300 feet from that, 600 feet from that, 1,000 feet from that.
Correct.
Great. Thank you. So just very quickly, we can touch on some of these other zones. Yeah, Councilor Durham?
I actually have three questions.
Oh, yeah.
Well, the first one is, during the forum, some of the towns or cities have adopted a door-to-door separation, not a, not a.
Parcel-to-parcel.
Yeah, not a parcel-to-parcel. Correct?
Yes.
Okay. And then, the other one is escaping me at the moment, I apologize.
Yeah, that would just be a variation of the 600-feet minimum. You could do door-to-door sometimes. That's been done, some jurisdictions have gone lower.
And I know, if I understand correctly, a dispensary cannot market in its windows, nor on its property. Correct?
Not within 1,000 feet of a sensitive location. So there's the siding, which is, allows you to go lower or within 600 feet, but you're right, the advertising restrictions are different and are wider, and it's actually not within 1,000 feet of one of these locations for advertising purposes and for use. So there's still an open question in the law if a local jurisdiction were to allow sort of what's called a cannabis cafe, whether or not that could be within 1,000 feet. But certainly, using it at all unless you're in a private residence, and it's not, I don't want to go too far in the weeds, no pun intended.
But, but to clear.
There's other restrictions.
Correct. They cannot market. So even though, even the ranch market can put a flashy neon Bud Light sign in the window.
Actually, they can't in Yountville.
Well, in general.
But in theory.
As per, but in theory, they can.
The one in Napa can.
Yes. The, you can't do that at any dispensary anyway.
Correct. And specifically, within 1,000 feet of a school, there's additional advertising restrictions.
So what are we protecting the children from with this law?
With the advertising?
No, with this buffer.
We're showing what is required by state law on this.
I think it's access to it, frankly.
Access.
Yes. I think that's basically it. It's.
Very good. I, I just wanted to understand that part. Thank you.
One other thing I just wanted to throw in, because we did have a recent change to, state law requires us to allow sidewalk vending. We have explicitly prohibited tobacco and cannabis, among a couple other things, from any sidewalk vendor, so they would not be allowed to wander through residential neighborhoods or within any designated buffer zone either.
Correct.
And I do want to just point out that the, these are very illustrative, and if the council was to have a more specific definition of the measurement, we would redo them based on, as you were pointing out, there's different ways that the council could choose to define that, and then we would ultimately develop the zoning maps around whatever criterion or illustration ones that you wanted. Let's move north to Yountville Community Park. Yountville Community Park, for those of you that are familiar, the north end of the park has the playground equipment. So again, we're following the same, the darker green is the 300-foot. Most of that affects the residential areas, Napa Valley Lodge, and the, our only gas station, where you can also have a nice wine supply. You'll see the second, the 600-foot radius takes out, or affects almost all of the Washington Square retail complex, and then the 1,000 goes further into most of the no-yo business district as we know it, north of what would be Starkey.
And keep in mind, these are drawn, again, based on the parcel of Yountville Community Park, not just the playground, but the entire parcel of the park.
Next, let's take a look at the Yountville Community Center.
So Steve, before you go on, so to your point, Nathan, if we were to define only the youth-oriented activity area as the north area that had recreational, or playground equipment, for example, that buffer zone could potentially start more north and then open up further south to business areas?
Yeah.
If that's the definition.
If that's ultimately where the town wanted to go, this map would then be altered to show it, everything skewed several feet northward towards where the playground is.
And that actually is a great segue for the next one we're going to show at the community center, because the community center may or may not be a factor, because if it's not deemed a youth center, then you don't even have a, a radius or restriction. So again, this shows you the, the same type of approach. Again, to the east, residential, it comes in at the 300-foot, and the 600-foot takes out a good section, and the 1,000-foot section takes out a broader section of Washington Street. And that just gives you some illustrations, because part of the questions that we would really want to be asking you is how to define those locations. I mentioned earlier Toyin Terrace and Forrester Park. We can do similar, those are clearly in a residential area, so in our, in staff's estimation, those are not logical from that standpoint, because based on prior council direction, you weren't interested in allowing. But I just, I, I think what's important here is that, one, we do have a, a school that we have to address by state law, and then the council has a couple discretionary areas of how are you going to treat Yountville Community Park and the Yountville Community Center.
And if the council wants visuals that are a little more interactive, I have a tab here where I can choose whatever layers of 300, 600, 1,000 for many of our parks, churches, schools, or community center. Just let me know, and we can show those.
Well, it being 529, I think we're going to probably have to hold that off to the next time we have a conversation, but thank you. Any specific questions or comments about the very general, very conceptual buffer zones that we're looking at here? Yes, Billy?
How many liquor licenses are in this town?
Oh, you're really on this Ting bill, aren't you? Well, don't worry about getting up, we heard you. And we're about, we have like one minute left, so.
Well, I'm.
Sit down, and we'll give it to you.
Let me look real quick.
I was going to say.
Including restaurants?
I, I need to look at whether that includes, if it's just on.
So we need ABC license.
Every single ABC license.
Okay.
Including the hotels.
So.
Oh, we're in a neighborhood of 30.
Uh-huh, uh-huh.
That includes ranch market.
And all the hotels.
Yep.
The hotels.
We don't have a shortage of getting alcohol to our people.
Yeah, exactly.
We're special. Yeah, we're special in here.
We do know that.
Any other last questions or comments? Because we are pretty much out of time for today. So this is why we said there's no action happening. This is still information gathering and information sharing. Yes, Elliot, if you could come on up, yes, please.
I just wanted to thank the council, thank everybody for coming today, and really appreciate everybody's sides of this issue. I understand that it's, it's a very personal decision to consume cannabis, and, and I, my heart is with you for the situations that you may have been in, where it's affected you in the wrong way, and might have done some damage to you. I have a lot of friends that had similar situations with mixing alcohol and driving, and mixing tobacco, and other products as well. I think this is very similar to what happened with alcohol in the United States in the 1920s, early 30s. This is definitely here, and I think that there are some areas of this, of the country, like Utah, that have been able to enforce some, some stricter guidelines on alcohol consumption and distribution of alcohol. And I think that unfortunately, or fortunately, for, for individuals that do need this product, for treating different sicknesses, or, or issues with their body, or with their, with their wellness system, that, that they're able to get this. It is going to be delivered. It is actually currently being delivered all throughout Yountville right now. So there is cannabis being delivered all throughout Yountville right now. I just, I'm not saying that to be rude by any means, I'm just letting you guys know that it's definitely already here and happening, and I think we're just here trying to get ahead of it and make sure that it's, it's regulated and controlled in the most professional and proper way possible. And we're not here to force our hand by any means. We definitely don't want to force a, a dispensary if the, if the community does not want that. This is definitely something that we want to be accepted with open arms, and just here purely out of guidance, and if there's any questions, if you guys want to speak to me at all, or ask any other detailed questions, I'll be happy to give you my information. But just wanted to say thank you to all of you guys, and thank you to the community. Thanks.
Thank you. And I just want to also clarify that even though Elliot's here as a partner in a dispensary, this has nothing to do with his business. He's here helping educate, because he's, he's lived this from a business perspective. In no way are we considering his opinion any more or less than any of the other opinions. He brings a, a retail professional perspective, and also there's, there's no application or anything like that that is coming from his business for our consideration. This is, he and Mr. Hill came here of their own volition to learn and provide information also. So just so none even leave and think that, why is there one businessperson here and not another? Any last thoughts that the council would like to share in the last few seconds that we have? Councilmember Moeller, give you a chance to say something today at the workshop?
Well, it's a, well, I have to admit, I am a pharmaceutical scientist, and I can say cannabidiol, and I know about THC receptors and, and all that other stuff. And I think that is beyond the scope of really what we're trying to talk about here. We're really trying to look at the. We're really trying to look at the, not only the laws, but possible changes in the law. I do have a quick question for Gary. I know it's a very hypothetical. But if you could just maybe comment on considering zoning, and if the state did, you know, have another law that went through similar to the delivery law, would it be of any benefit for us to do some general discussion about pre-zoning instead of waiting till, boom, here's a law, and if you haven't zoned by now, then they can come in if they have a state license and?
Yeah, so generally speaking, it's going to depend on how that state law reads. But yes, if they are allowing certain things by right, it might make sense to pre-select where those will shake out and actually end up going. It also depends on whether or not the state removes zoning authority or how that actually reads. So it'll all depend on what the state law says.
It goes back to, it's a good question. It goes back to the beginning of Prop 64, and basically, the industry and, and the language put a very short timeframe on the ability for jurisdictions to either craft new zoning and legislation or, or ban it all. And many just said, okay, no, to everything, and we'll figure it out as we go. And we've taken a little bit of that position, and now we're trying to figure it out as we go.
Yeah, and I would add that courts are very protective of the voter's right to pass things at the ballot box, and will uphold it if they believe that the state legislature is doing something contrary to the voter's intent. And there's a long line of cases that is very clear that the legislature can't mess with what the voters have done. So if the voter said in Prop 64 as they did that the locals can regulate or completely ban something, it would be a very high hurdle for the state to come in and force approval of those things.
Thanks. Councilmember Durham, any last comment? Vice Mayor?
Just thank you to everyone concerned for us going through this together.
And I'll just say thank you also, and that this is far from the final conversation, as you can tell. I think in the future, as not only our ad hoc committee members will continue to learn more about it on our behalf, I think bringing law enforcement in to have a conversation makes sense. There's some other elements to this that other cities, even the city of Napa, has learned in some cases what's working and what isn't working. Vallejo has some fairly large number of dispensaries. They've had some learnings. And so we continue to reach out to our colleagues in our neighbor communities and find out. As the Vice Mayor reported with Santa Rosa, we're going to try to eliminate any uncertainty and, and questions before we make any decisions. So again, thank you all for being here and taking time out of your afternoon. You're all welcome to stay. We, we're 23 minutes away from our next meeting. So I will go ahead and ask for a motion to adjourn to that regular meeting of 6:00 PM if we have a motion and a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Either see you in a few minutes, or thank you for coming.